Carlton is going to take him.
Carlton.
I'm gonna be a rebel. I'd like to call to order the East Point Plan Commission meeting for December 4th, 2025, at 6:59. Carlton, if you could please call the roll.
Oh, here. I can barely hear you.
Mary Hall Rayford?
Here.
Wanda Moody?
Here.
Kimberly Naylor?
Here.
Gary Sessick?
Here.
Alexander Stokes?
Here.
Sheila Yulinski?
She's excused. Absent, but with a.
And John De Hope?
Here. Moving on, can I get an approval of the agenda for the evening?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and support. If you please call the roll.
Mary Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kimberly Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sessick?
Yeah, uh, was that Stokes or Sessick?
Sessick.
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
Sheila Yulinski?
Not here.
Uh, John De Hope?
Here, yes. Moving on to the first hearing of the public, you have three minutes to speak. If you are here to speak about something during the public hearings, I would ask that you keep those comments for the public hearing. But if you have something else to say, you have three minutes and the floor is yours. Does anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to be heard? We're moving on. Can I get a mo- a motion to approve the minutes from November 6th, 2025, as well as the November 6th, 2025 special meeting?
Oh, moved.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Mary Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kimberly Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sessick?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
I'll abstain since I wasn't here.
Sheila Yulinski? She's absent. And John Hope?
Yes. Can I get a motion to open the first public hearing?
So motion.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion by Ms. Moody, we have support by Ms. Rayford. Please call the roll.
Mary Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kimberly Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sessick?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
Sheila Yulinski? And John De Hope?
Yes. Mr. Rebeal, do you want to give a little color on this before we open it up for any comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this item is a request for special land use approval and later site plan approval. For the property you see on the screen, which is 24700 Greshit, to establish a used vehicle sales establishment at that property, as it was once used, the zoning ordinance requires that used vehicle sales and several other uses, if they, if there are not special land uses already approved, that when someone is trying to initiate or restart the business, that they come before you as applicant is.
Okay. Does anybody wish to be heard about this project? Anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the first public hearing. And then we'll move on, may I have a motion to open the second public hearing?
Motion to open second hearing?
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion by Ms. Naylor, we have support by Ms. Moody, please call the roll.
Mary Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kimberly Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sessick?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
And John De Hope?
Yes. Seeing as that there has been a change to this, I'll take this if that's okay. So, the applicants have chosen to work a little closer with the building department, and I'm going to read into the record, and then I will actually ask for a motion to table unless anyone else wishes to say something, and we will table this for the January meeting. So this was received on November 28th from, do we mention the resident's name?
I think you can.
Alright, so this was received from a Michael Andre on November 28th. This was in regards to the proposal for Veronica and Beaconsfield. This is Michael Andre at 19171 Veronica responding to the public hearing of 20911 Beaconsfield for the purpose of special land use. I do not wish to see my neighborhood become a multifamily residential area. We moved into this area for the sole purpose of having single-family homes. Please do not change or modify the street parking or allow any multifamily residential dwelling buildings. This was from Michael Andre. And I believe we have one more? Yes. This was received on December 2nd from a Marsha Basak. For nearly 20 years, my husband and I have lived at Eastland Woods Manor condominiums directly across from said property. We oppose the modification of the off-street park provision. This area is a quiet, established neighborhood, we have some concerns about parking on Beaconsfield. Beaconsfield often serves as an alternate route when the busy I-94 and old eight-mile curve is backed up, or when there was traffic accidents. During these frequent events, the traffic on Beaconsfield can be quite constant. Another concern is that the street parking at the proposed address on Beaconsfield is already used as an overflow parking for two condo buildings that were there between Ridgemont Street and Parkside Drive, which is directly across the street. These two condominium buildings house up to 12 residents, and while two parking assigned assignments are provided, it often happens that Beaconsfield is used for parking on holidays or during parking lot paving or repair. Please reconsider the proposed special land use for the empty and rather small lot at 20912 Beaconsfield. This was Paul and Marsha Basak, 19501 Ridgemont Street, St. Clair Shores, Michigan, 48080. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard?
Chairman De Hunt, that should be 20911, not 12. What am I?
20911.
Said 12.
Oh, yes, thank you, I'm just reading what the resident has put on your cell.
No, I get it.
Okay. Does anybody wish to be heard on this project before I ask for it to be tabled? Anybody wish to be heard? Do we need to make another motion to table?
Yes, that would be an order, and then I'll state the reason for the tabling, the agenda item, and also when the matter is going to be tabled too.
Okay, so can I get a motion to table this?
Chairman De Hunt, I'll make a motion that we table the discussion on 20911 Veronica.
Beaconsfield.
Beaconsfield, I'm sorry, to our January meeting.
And we also need to note that it is because they are working with the building department?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And have asked for additional time?
Yes.
We have motion by Mr. Sessick, we have support by Ms. Rayford. Please call the roll.
Mary Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kimberly Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sessick?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
John De Hope?
Yes. That item is tabled, moving on. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing for item C? We have motion by Ms. Moody, do we have support?
Support.
We have support by Mr. Sessick, please call the roll.
Mary Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kimberly Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sessick?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
John De Hope?
Yes. Mr. Rebeal or Mr. Myers, do you want to introduce this topic before we open it up to public?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, the, um, in March, as you know, the city's code of ordinances was amended to enable the establishment of adult-use recreation, adult-use recreational marijuana retailers. The, um, that, the code of ordinances refers to the licensing process and the process by which the city will assign licenses for these establishments. That ordinance also refers to the zoning ordinance as the regulating ordinance for where they are allowed to be located. The zoning ordinance as it currently stands only allows, only mentions or allows medical marijuana. So this is a set of amendments that is intended to regulate adult-use marijuana the same way and according to the same buffering restrictions, and from a zoning perspective, regulate them identically, same parking standards, as the city currently regulates medical marijuana establishments. It's a bit of housekeeping to, to catch the zoning ordinance up with the decision, the policy decision that the city made.
Okay, so it's not changing anything, it's just essentially legitmizing recreational as opposed to medical?
Correct, and specifying that it is subject to those buffering restrictions and from a zoning, from a landscaping perspective, everything that is evaluated in the course of reviewing a zoning plan is subject to those.
But short of that, nothing has changed, we haven't tweaked anything, and we are in compliance with LARA and all that good stuff?
Correct, I was trying to agree with that last answer, yes.
Alright, does anybody wish to be heard with regards to this topic? Anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the third public hearing and we will move on to item A, new business, Mr. Rebeal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so as I mentioned, the applicant who is here has purchased property and is interested in establishing a used car sales facility at 24700 Greshit. The planning commission is being asked to make two decisions today. The first one, which we're talking about, is special land use, that is, the commission has the power to recommend approval or denial to city council of a special land use, and a special land use is a use that is not permitted by right, there's some discretionary power to ensure that it is appropriate where it is, where it has been applied for. We provided a review in your packets of the, of our opinion of the special land use standards and how this applies, I think in summary, I can go into any detail about any of the standards, but the standards refer to consistent compatibility with adjacent uses, consistency with the master plan, whether the site is served by adequate public facilities, the use's impact on pedestrian vehicle traffic, whether it protects the health, safety, and welfare of the community from nuisances, and whether it's consistent with the zoning ordinance. This facility was want-to-use car establishment, and we're not aware of any issues with the operation. The zoning ordinance does have several provisions that are intended to more effectively separate residential uses from uses that are vehicle-oriented like this. As you'll see in the site plan review, there are some items that in the plans that you received, or the cities received thus far, are not quite there, but we think they're moving in a positive direction, and is, as long, I think as long as we can come to a zoning ordinance compliant site plan, then the special land use is appropriate, and I would say meets all these standards. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dear Beal?
In, in our packet, I'm sorry, in our packet, initially it was pointed out that you were asking us to, um, not necessarily approve this tonight, but to let it move forward either with cooperation of administration working with them. I just was wondering, is it because of the various loose ends that have not been totally tied up yet?
Yes, yes, and I can get into details, we're talking about the site plan, but there are, I think loose ends is a good way to put it, some of them are more significant than others, but since it's reoccupying a, an existing facility, and the changes that are being made are being made to bring it closer to compliance with the zoning ordinance, it, it's, you can sort of, you can get a sense of how it's going to be, so, as far as special land use, as I said, I think from our perspective, the special land use is appropriate as long as we can come to a compliance site plan.
So any, any little issues you might have can, you believe can be handled administratively?
I believe they can be handled administratively. We, for the site plan review, we provided two motions, because it's really your choice, whether you'd like to see it again or know that it has been buttoned up. I, I guess, I can say that I think they can be handled administratively, but I'm not, I'm getting to know this body and trying to understand what the threshold is that you're comfortable with.
Mr. Myers?
If I can add to the simplicity of the question, it's, we think that if we can pass the special land use, which is out of a pre-existing use of the building, then the uniqueness that needs to be modified according to the new site plan ordinance for land use can be administered between the organization and the building department's administration without having to go any further, and then they can be presented.
So it sounds like we have a very simple solution here?
Very simple, in my opinion, but what is concerned is my concern that you have the right to review it in detail and, and not hand it off to the administrative staff, if you don't want to.
I'm assuming you gentlemen are with this. The only thing I ask is please make it not an eyesore that it is right now. It's horrific, it's been horrific for 30 years.
If you go to the podium?
If you wish to, yeah. Is the light on the microphone?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, Sam Thomas working on the project, trying to bring this property back up to code and, and get it opened as a, a used auto sales. Beautiful building, it's got character. Even the, uh, the road sign that you guys saw, looks like something from Vegas, you know, it's, it's, it's of the time, so, I'd, I'd love to have, have him keep it, and I guess that's still in the process of hopefully keeping it. I don't know what, what else to talk about, but if you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for the gentleman?
Well, you said you want to beautify the, the location, what's your thought pattern? How do you want it to look?
Painting, painting the building, resurfacing the asphalt parking, trees, landscaping, that sort of stuff.
I do have some questions in regards to the trees and the shrubs. I was noticing in the, the plan and that too, though, you were, you were proposing fewer trees than what the code actually, ordinance, I mean, requires, so is that being worked out agreeably that they'll either add the additional trees and shrubs, or is there something they can do to bypass that?
The planning commission has the ability to waive or modify that requirement if it so chooses. In the letter, I said that, that, while it's true that they are not providing the entirety of the, of the, of the landscaping that would be required if they were building from the ground up, I, I, I don't, I would not argue that it's there or correct yet, but at least what has been proposed so far would be a significant improvement and bring it very close to compliance. So, if there, I, I think that given, if, if the character of, if the use of the property is as a used car lot, there's not a lot of, lot more room for frontage landscaping, so I think it's up to the planning commission, but if there is a more significant, and more significant deployment of landscaping, that it may be appropriate to waive a portion of it.
One final question, if I may, the last question I have is, is in regards to the back of the property setback, it requires 20 feet, but the paperwork is indicating that it's less than 20 feet. How much less, I'm sorry, how much less than the 20 feet is it, is it significant?
Three and a half feet. Uh, Mr. Myers just said it's three and a half feet.
And again, we're not, we would not expect anybody to move a building for three and a half feet, but it wasn't stipulated, so I just wanted to see how significant, thank you, thanks Chairman.
Does anybody else have any questions? As far as.
Does this, excuse me?
We had another, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm possibly missing it, but does it say in here how many vehicles will be on the lot at any given time?
I believe we are.
Was it 20?
Yeah, it were, it was 22, I believe.
Total occupancy of 20, 20? Okay.
Uh, the plan shows 23 spaces.
Yeah, we have to lose one, one space, I believe.
It was 22.
And we might have to lose another one due to the corner situation where Greshit and Hoss meet.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, we still would like to talk about the garbage enclosure, I don't know if it was going to come up, or.
I will bring that up, I guess, so they're, they need to make two decisions, one, whether or not to recommend the discretionary decision to city council, and then we'll talk about the site plan, or we'll get to that.
Gotcha.
I feel comf, personally, I feel comfortable with allowing the building department to handle these things administratively, including the shrubs and trees. As this is a repurpose of, it, 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 there's, this project has nowhere to go but up from what it is right now, please God make it look nice. I've had people on Nine Mile, I won't mention names, say they were going to make things look really pretty, and it looks like garbage, just because you put paint on it doesn't mean it looks nice, so please make it look nice. Having said that, does anybody wish?
To recommend conditional approval of the proposed special land use for a used automobile sales facility at 24700 Greshit, 143-023-1004, based on the findings of fact in the planner's review letter dated November 26, 2025.
Should we also include and to allow the building department to work administratively with the applicant?
You can, the, the second, the motion for the site plan addresses that.
Separate.
Okay, alright. We have motion by Ms. Moody, we have support by Ms. Rayford, please call the roll.
Microphone.
Yes.
Mary Rayford, um, Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Kimberly Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sessick?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
Sheila Yul, she's not here. And John Hope?
Yes. Moving on to item B, Mr. Rebeal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so we covered much of this, but as I have mentioned, the, the applicant is reoccupying the building. Because of the use, the applicant is required to have this site plan review and be evaluated against the current ordinance requirements. We, as I said, I, I think the landscape that is proposed is, will be a significant improvement, I do not think that the, the plan that is in your, in your packets is quite there yet, nor does it meet all of the requirements, because it needs to be prepared and stamped by a licensed landscape architect. But I think in concept, it makes sense, and as far as the quantities of what is being provided, I believe that it may be appropriate to, to require a similar quantity to what is being presented, arranged slightly differently with different species and being prepared by a professional. There are several other things that are, that have been identified by both myself and the engineer as deficiencies in the submission, those are legitimately paperwork and can be resolved if the applicant provides a note here or there. The, there's a couple things, there's a couple things that are not, that do require revision, one of them significantly, I think, is the lack of a screen wall, and I think that that requirement is appropriate to maintain, given the adjacency to residential. And then the applicant is, I believe, going to explain a request for a waiver from the requirement for a dumpster enclosure. In this case, I do think that a waiver may be appropriate because, just because of the nature of the business, I believe this place can probably be operated without a dumpster, and so, um, the applicant can explain whether or not they can handle the trash or how the trash would be handled, but it seems like there may be a solution for there without adding a dumpster enclosure to the site for the used car dealership. The applicant mentioned the signs, there is a non-conforming pole sign on the front of the lot. You'll remember from last meeting, we were working on amending the zoning ordinance to allow more of those non-conforming signs to stay, that has not been resolved, so we just put language in there recommending that, I, I think it'll be resolved by the time we get another submission and review it, and the zoning ordinance either will have been modified, perhaps to allow that sign, or it will.
Protection and, and maintenance on this, on this property, in other words, they're not bringing cars in, doing auto repairs, and then putting them on the market for sale, again, there would be a reason for us to offer them a no dumpster, as long as there is an affidavit giving us proof that they have some form of garbage removal system on a regular basis that will replace a full-size dumpster and its enclosure when all they're doing is office space and marketing of sale of cars. Other than that, everything else I think is, again, matchable by the administration details to give them time to get it done and get it on the market before we even get through the next year.
Okay, does anybody have any questions before we go on? Alright, Mr. Beal, why don't you start with, with each point maybe that you want to get addressed, and then the gentleman here can?
We had one, one more point, if, if I may, regarding the gate in the back at the alley. The, my client would like to have it for, for safety reasons, another way out of the, the property if, if need be.
Didn't we have something with gravity across the street where we did not allow that?
We did allow it.
We did, okay.
We did allow them a, a, a weight-sized capacity movable gate, so they'd have a second exterior out.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there was an existing one on, on the site as well.
And I think, I guess my comment was, I think the gate is fine, but the wall needs to extend, it needs to be a wall, and it needs to extend the.
He's willing to do a CMU wall, correct? He's willing to do a CMU wall, correct?
Okay.
Okay. So the condition that we identified was that the applicant eventually receives special land use approval, that the, I think the applicant just mentioned, these spaces are essentially in conflict with each other. If they're just going to be vehicle displaced, place, spaces, maybe that's workable, but it just seems, this comment came from the engineer and from me, that that should be revised so that those spaces are not in conflict with each other. The revised submission must provide dimensions of all proposed parking spaces, just to ensure they all comply with the ordinance requirements. We were looking for just some detail about proposed colors and information about where those colors will be deployed as the applicant is working to paint and refinish the building. Revised submission must comply with zoning ordinance landscape design standards as described above, except for any waivers granted by the planning commission. And those waivers, ultimately, the planning commission does have to decide whether or not they can be granted. And then a revised submission must include a note about the removal of all non-conforming lighting and provide details about any proposed site lighting. And lastly, prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued, the applicant must achieve compliance with the sign regulations and the zoning ordinance. Okay. And so the two things that, the two waivers that, that are, the applicant is asking for that I do think are reasonable to discuss are the required trash enclosure and the full allotment of required frontage trees and shrubs. Trees, currently four trees are proposed, where six are required, and currently nine shrubs are proposed, where 36 are required.
Thirty-six?
So, as I said, I don't think that the solution, I don't think what is shown is quite there. I think there could be more shrubs deployed. But I do think that the locations, I guess I see the, the best outcome here is more shrubs being deployed in the islands where they are proposed to get closer to that number, not necessarily requiring that more spaces be taken by landscaping.
Is this something you folks can do?
Originally, that, that concern, we spoke about the, the two parking spots being detrimental to each other.
So, although it would be trash enclosure.
Yes, so through those trees. And then the trash enclosure, you don't, what is, what is your, what will be your process for making sure the refuse is picked up?
We, we brought up the, a point of hiring a garbage company to pick up on a regular basis and doing a contract that way.
Okay. So will your trash receptacles be outside? Will they be inside until they get picked up?
They'll be wheeled out, like residential, wheeled out on a specific day, night.
Okay.
That's what we talked about. I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either. Okay. I got no problem with that either. Do we have a sample motion?
You do.
All right. All these pages have all popped apart, so.
Yeah. There was one, I think, that basically was a conditional, and then allowing administration to handle it. But I don't remember where it was.
True. Chairman, do you want him to read it for you?
Yes, how about we do that?
He'll read it with the correct address for us.
And you can please read it with the waived items.
Yes. And just to be clear, I'm reading the sample motion for approval and administrative approval of the outstanding items.
Yes, with the reduction from six trees to three.
Right.
And for the allowance for not having a dumpster enclosure because they have a process to handle that.
Thank you.
Nine trees to six. No, it's from six to three, isn't it?
It says currently four trees are proposed, six are required.
So from six to four.
Six to four. Okay, we're both through.
I think that was the shrubs.
Yes.
Shrubs were nine. Okay. Six required.
The motion is to approve the site plan for a used automobile sales facility at 24700 Grashit, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting, and the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated November 26, 2025, and the required with all zoning ordinance requirements for screening. Number seven, a revised submission must include the removal of all non-conforming lighting and provide details about any proposed site lighting. And number eight, prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued, the applicant must achieve compliance with the sign regulations and the zoning ordinance. Additionally, the planning commission grants the following waivers. Number one, waiving the requirement for a trash enclosure, given the relatively minor amount of refuse generation on the site, and the applicant's justification that a dumpster is not necessary. And number two, a waiver of the full allotment of required frontage trees. Currently, four trees are proposed, where six are required.
So moved. We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion by Mr. Sassek. We have support by Ms. Rayford. Please call the roll.
Mary Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kim Lee Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sassek?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
And John Hoyt.
Please make it look nice. Please. Moving on to item C, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Do everything these people say, you'll get along famous looks.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night. Happy holidays. Mr. Abiel, item C.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So item C are the aforementioned proposed amendments to the ordinance to enable the zoning of adult-use recreational marijuana. Those amendments are to add, which is the required off-street parking spaces, to, as with other retail and as with medical marijuana, to require one space per 300 square feet of usable floor area, plus one per employee. And then add the definition of adult-use marijuana facility or establishment with reference to the state act that enables those in the state of Michigan. And revise the definition of marijuana, just to be more precise than, in, in the last version of the ordinance, I believe, we're quoting a different law. And so this is, this definition is basically just saying that whatever the state laws define that term as is what the zoning ordinance will use.
Does anybody have any comments? I'm going to beat a dead horse here for a second. And I know that it will do absolutely nothing, but I'm still going to say this. Section 7.11, adult recreation, adult-use recreational marijuana of the buffer district specifically. I'm looking at item two. Buffer district is further defined as an area within 500 feet of the following. I'm going to skip right down to item C. Existing licensed childcare center. We all know where I'm going with this. Our friends at Common Citizen are not 500 feet away from this. I don't particularly care about the semantics, the legalese, or anything like that. I'm just simply saying the spirit of this is going to be violated. So we're going to approve this, and it's, we're going to recommend sending it to city council for changes. But I'm simply saying, right here and now, we're going to send this to city council, and there's already somebody who is violating the spirit of this.
Yeah.
So I just want it on the record. And I know, like I said, I'm beating a dead horse, and I know it's going to move on, and I know it's going to get passed, and everybody's going to be happy that we've got marijuana, sorry, Harvey. But they're not, the spirit of this is being abrogated. So, okay, I'm off my soapbox. Do we have a motion? Or does anybody else want to jump on the soapbox?
Yeah. I have had issues all along because of the daycare as well, but slightly different in the fact that, granted, we admitted that there was no way for them to know at the time that there was going to be a facility going in because nothing had been purchased, nothing had been agreed to, other than a verbal conversation, and the county was not aware of it. We've now had a daycare in session three years, and we've had common citizens stall for three years, and they're still being rewarded. And they're being rewarded for all the wrong reasons, including the judicial system. I'm sorry.
Now that I've had a joiner on the soapbox, we can move on to sending this to city council because what we're sending to city council has nothing to do with our soapbox. It has everything to do with the law. So do we have a suggested motion here? Or would you like to read it, Mr. Abiel? How about you read it for us? Because, you know, we're getting old up here.
Sure. I actually did not write one for this one, but maybe Mr. Albrecht can friendly amendment, anything I missed. I believe the motion is to recommend approval of the proposed language as described in the memo dated November 20th, 2025, to city council, based on the conducting, also considering that a duly noticed public hearing was conducted on these amendments.
To which nobody said anything.
Correct.
Okay. And we are in complete compliance with LARA and, and everything.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there anything you wish to add to that motion?
No, Mr. Abiel did a fine job.
All right. Does anybody want to make Mr. Abiel's motion?
I'll make the motion as he read it.
We have motion. Do we, do we have support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Mary, excuse me. Mary Rayford?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kim Lee Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sassek?
Begrudgingly, yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
And John Hoyt.
Only because legally it's right, I will say yes. Moving on, now that I've lost my agenda because everything comes apart.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to item seven, unfinished business. We, didn't we table this?
Yeah, just the location.
You tabled the, you tabled the public hearing, or the public hearing for requested modification of the parking, and this is just consideration of the site plan, which is still on your agenda.
So we'll leave it tabled, then.
I think you, you just need to make a motion.
To continue tabling it?
Similar to the public hearing, to table consideration of the site plan, please.
Can I get a motion to continue the tabling of this item?
So moved.
Support.
We have motion by Ms. Rayford. We have support by Mr. Sassek to table item seven under unfinished business. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kim Lee Naylor?
Yes.
Gary Sassek?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
And John Hoyt?
Yes. Moving on to the building department update. Mr. Myers?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to first wish you a very, very Merry Christmas. I'm speaking on my soapbox, but it is the most valued, in my opinion, national holiday we have, and it's very, very important. So I hope you enjoy your family. Don't find it a drudgery. Don't find it overwhelming, but just sit back, relax, and enjoy the plus of the gifts we've all been given in this day and age in our life. So Merry Christmas. We won't see you until that. Be careful on the other holiday, at the other end of the month, because that's when people get crazy, and we need more of, of Richard's work. And so be careful with that. In our report, let me highlight a couple of things. Let's not go back to the soapbox, but let's go back to Common Citizens a minute. They have gone through their court hearing. We have met with them in, in the attorneys, and they now are designed and scheduled to begin the process of pulling permits and being implemented by the first of the year. They will also have a deadline time that has already been set by the courts to complete that within a six-month window of time. Attorney, if that's slightly off, let me know if you know anything that I don't, but I do know that they have to get to me and pull the plan reviews. I have seen some of the preliminary work, but I need all the final drawings, and so that they can begin to start this process in January and complete within six months. Is there anything I might have missed in that detail?
No.
And it was ordered by the court and approved by the court to, to move forward. So that's, really was outside of the city's hands at that point from that hearing and, and process made. So you will begin in the first half of, of 2026, see that building coming forward. Let's go back to an old process, if you remember it less than a year ago, a little over, little less than a year ago. We recommended that the old Bobev and the, the old big boys be demolished because it would not meet any of the zoning qualifications or the conditions and safeties of the building for the cities moving forward in the downtown district. We will be moving that needle a little bit further. I have required and requested and confirmed that we'll have a meeting next week with the owners of that property to review proposals that they would maybe begin to implement onto that property. So we'll see what they have to offer us next week and see if we can get that vacant lot filled in with, with a usable building. So if all is well, I'd hope to see in two or three months that back to planning commission for a new idea of what can be done on that property moving forward in a development stage. Talking about development stage, we're talking about the old property, project at Prime Storage, just north of us. I am in the middle at this moment of doing all the white box plan review for their first floor renovation. I should be finished by the end of tomorrow, and then if what they have to correct, then they should be able to move forward on that. They have now completely tabled the second phase, which is the, the lot for parking and storage, where they put their dumpster enclosure and new wall on the back of that property, behind the building. And they have already submitted a site plan for the south of the property to us. It looks like it will be approved as a meeting all of the setbacks, sidelines, as well as fire entry and exit problems that we had before. They have to submit to us in the first part of the year a set of building drawings, and right now, they have affirmed to us this week that it is out to bid for a contractor to plan that construction in the beginning of this coming year. So that might take care of that terrible mess. The idea for them, if they don't take care of it, then they have to remove everything, get the signs off, get all the property clean, cleared, and put back in order without any fencing. So they're going to put money into it one way or the other, but right now, they're looking at giving us a contracted bid, and potentially, if we can approve all of the other pieces, they should be able to start in the spring. So there's another project that's, that's moving a little bit further than we were, than when we've seen it was stalled for a minute. There's a couple other pieces. I have an investigation meeting with our favorite organization, Winner Sausage, not next week, but the following Tuesday, and we believe that maybe they have used that storage facility without all the legal documents to open it. And so we will make that investigated report back to you next year or next in, in January to find out how far they have gone to utilize that property without pulling all the HVAC, electrical, and structural blueprint properties for it. But we'll look at that, not this coming Tuesday, but the following one, hopefully, and we'll have a chance to see what's going on there. Other than that, we have of the Keystone property is a bit of a pause for us. We'll talk with Paul and I to talk about when does your planning commission's approval of site plan and land use of the gravel pit, when does that expire? And it only lasts for so many months. And the question is, the longer they postpone the permit. And the question is, the longer they postpone the permits and construction of that, we may have to reevaluate bringing them back and getting that resolved. Number two, we've been brought with a request to make modifications. We've kind of sat back and said, you tell us what you're gonna do. But they're thinking about taking all the units in the building, which are on separate parcels, and combine them into one parcel. I really hope they do that, but whether they do or not is theirs to decide before I give them any information of what happens. If they decide to do that, our ordinance has granted us the right to require them to start over and bring that up to current codes. Example, come of the current codes that they're not meeting at the moment are, you're allowed to have two outside storage cars for every storage bay. And if you've been through the alley, you know that's not the right number. And so if they step away from their present condition, it now becomes a new lot, a new design, and we get to go back and start all over with how we address, how they operate that business, if they connect all the pieces under one parcel. So we've left that to the assessors, and we'll find out what that piece gets to take on as we move forward. We do have a couple other buildings that the city attorney and I are beginning to work out. We have some questions to be answered from a legal point of view. We do have several, one particular building right now in front of us that we have posted to not occupy, that has been running, in support both of the violations they brought us from your site plan. You requested before I arrived here that they were allowed to do something with a condition of five or six other items. They failed to do any of those items, and at this point, they have failed to pay their taxes over the past three years. They failed to get a license in the city for the last three years. So we have tagged the building, and as soon as we can have time to schedule with the city attorney, we'll find out what our legal action next step could be to help them understand this is an important life, health, safety issue that they need to honor the city's guidelines. So we'll address that property and that commercial business hopefully in the next week or so, right before we get to Christmas. Are there any other questions and buildings you'd like me to address? I have a number of things that are on the table from old to new, and we're working really hard to, we have 57 businesses that are not quite in compliance with their licenses or failed to complete them, and so we are now addressing them. We hope to have them all clearly in a legal position of compliance by the end of this year, and then we'll begin to look aggressively at our vacant business that are still in the property and what we can be doing with those.
I noticed that Moses Roses is coming along. How close are they going to be to open?
They're really, really close. We've really granted them. What we're waiting now to see the final approval of the building and occupancy has been granted by us, but not permitted by me until the state board comes in and does their inspection required for medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, since it's that close. And so until I see Crystal sending me a letter of confirmation, they won't be able to make that next move, but they're that close.
Does anybody have anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Erbeal. Moving on to the second hearing in the public. Does anybody wish to be heard?
Seas Point resident, I really wasn't gonna speak tonight, but that is news to me about Common Citizen. I had thought that they were denied, not because they're right across the corner from a daycare center, which would be reason enough, but because they weren't going to fulfill their entire site plan of a $6 million investment. They had whittled it down to $4 million, maybe. They're not taking all the property that they said they were going to. I thought those were the reasons why they were not approved. So it is a surprise to me that they have been resurrected. I'm assuming that they're going forward with their lesser plan. You know, we had our mayor tell these businesses that they needed to be up and running by December 31st, which is, what, 27 days away from today? And now you are saying that Common Citizen is getting an extra six months? Is that a firm six-month deadline? Because I'm, you know, if July 1st rolls around and they're not up and running, I would, I would hope that we would shut them down. I just, it's wrong on so many levels. Don't mean to take away your soapbox chairman to haunt, but I just, that was a very unpleasant surprise. Anyways, you know, if you can maybe elaborate on that a little more, I'm assuming that everything, I'm assuming is probably correct, but if I've misinterpreted something, maybe there can be a clarification. I just don't know how they have any legal standing to move forward with a plan that was not what they originally proposed when they were granted a license to begin with. So, other than that, it's good to see you all. Thank you again for all of the hard work that you do, and I hope that all of you and your families have a very Merry Christmas and happy holiday season, and see you next year. Thank you.
That was court ordered, by the way. It had nothing to do with the city. It was the judge.
Still have to wait for the state to prove a little more.
Hey, with that 24% additional marijuana tax, who knows who's gonna be open anymore? We might have a nice, beautiful building that can be repurposed for a nice brew pub. All right. Moving on to commissioners' comments. Mr. Myers, do you have anything?
I do not, but the, with the support of our city attorney, to answer the public's comment, if they are granted by court, and I'm assuming that's the Court of Appeals Court that did that.
It would have been the McComb County Circuit Court. I'm not aware of the exact terms of whatever that court order consists of, but Attorney Tim Ferrand has been representing the city in that matter, and once I finish my docket tomorrow morning, I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Ferrand to get the details on that court ruling.
And that was what he sent to me, and I'll just confirm with you when we get a chance to detail. The reality will be, we have the jurisdiction, if they've been given a restricted amount of time, we have the restriction to make a decision as a city if they fail to do it on a timely manner.
When did the court make that decision, John?
A week or two ago, a couple weeks back.
I'll follow up with Mr. Ferrand tomorrow.
Just a couple weeks ago. Again, I wanna wish you a great holiday. This is so fun to take a break and enjoy family, enjoy friends, and look at the past year and look forward to the great year coming ahead. We will not slow down. If there's a comment from our department, please understand that we're asking to continue the strengthening of the building department, at the character of the building department, so that we can address both residential. We're working with the city attorney on almost 21 houses and properties in the street, and when we get to the third quarter, we'll begin to look at some commercial buildings that we have some of the same issues with, and we'll begin to target those. So we're working hard, and we don't plan to slow down until we have this city in a safe health and a wellness for a better quality of life for the people moving forward.
Mr. Erbeal, do you have anything?
Just to say that there doesn't seem to be a winter lull in development inquiries. We don't have any pending development, other than what you already know about, but a fair amount of inquiries, some of which could become fully fledged applications for interesting projects. And other than that, happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Whitsett, do you have anything?
Happy holidays.
Mr. Albright?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the commissioner. During the month of November, the building department did send over to our office approximately 12 requests to, for nuisance abatement proceedings in the circuit court. Most of those consisted of residential properties, but one did consist of a commercial property on Stevens. That's in addition to the approximately eight or so other nuisance abatement action cases that we're currently handling. I would imagine now that Mr. Myers is relatively full staff in the building department, that over the next couple of months, and as spring approaches, that we will probably get more of those cases. Some of those consist of fire damaged garages, homes that are not being maintained, and the like. So the goal is to clean up the city in a significant way in the coming year. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Curley, do you have anything to say?
Do I have anything to say? I do. Just wanna wish everybody a wonderful holiday, a Merry Christmas, and hope that all of you rest and have a blessed day at the Day of Christ. The other remark would be that I would hope that all of you take the attitude that I have, that it's not the end of the world. United States will survive. When George Washington got in that boat and went across the Potomac, he thought the Revolutionary War was over, that we were gonna be defeated. But America is strong. We have stronger people than, that love our country than the people who don't love our country. So you may not go as far as I do. I don't watch national news anymore. I watch, I watch local news, but you still hear about everything that's going on. But let's forget about that. Let's plan what you're gonna have for Christmas, whether it's a duck or a turkey, whatever you, whatever you want, but God bless everybody.
Ms. Moody?
Well, I just wanna say to everyone, Happy Holidays, and let this be a season of giving because there's so many people that are lacking, and if you see someone that is lacking, it is, it is an opportunity for you to step up and give. I say be blessed, everyone, be safe, and just know that it's not over yet. And it's a good, like he was saying, that the country is on the uphill. Sometimes we might not think that, but it is. But we just have to continue to move on and trust God and know that everything will be okay after a while. So Happy Holidays to everyone.
Ms. Rafer?
Thank you. A couple things I wanna mention that regarding events in the city. Eastwood, Otfells, right across the street, is collecting toys for their annual children's party. And VFW has decided to adopt a family this year. They're also seeking donations and toys for that particular family. It's going to be an interesting year. I don't know how to put it other than that, but it's going to be an interesting year. We have a lot of things going on, a lot of things to watch for. But I believe that we're gonna make it. We are going to make it. And so I wanna wish everyone a very happy New Year. Enjoy it. Sometimes we take time for granted, and we have to take each moment for what it is and do the best with it that we can. So Happy Holidays.
Mr. Stokes?
Happy Holidays and no further comments.
Ms. Naylor?
I'd like to wish everyone a Happy Holiday, as you said, take time to appreciate time. When it comes to the nation, this is just year one. I just have to really focus. I think it's a great time to really make people focus and awaken to our true capacity. We take a lot for granted, and when we have this type of chaos, it helps us birth something new. So I look forward to new beginnings in the new year and awaken consciousness among people to say, how can we be the best version of ourselves? So Happy New Year.
Mr. Sussex?
I'd like to wish everybody up here on the commission, everybody in the audience, anybody listening in, a very, very special holiday season. No matter how you celebrate the holiday, remember that our tomorrows are not guaranteed, and that reach out to those friends, family, that you haven't touched in quite some time.
Thank you.
Y'all brought me down.
Sorry.
It's very simple. You know, it's easy to say Happy Holidays, but I'm a firm believer in the phrase Tempest Fugit, time flies. Tomorrow is promised to nobody, as everybody has pointed out up here. So you need to live every day like it's your last, potentially. There was a movie quote that I absolutely love, and it pretty much says, "Everything will work out in the end, and if it hasn't worked out, it's not the end." I think it's a great quote. Now that I've given my 50 cent fortune cookie wisdom, I do wanna say Happy Holidays to everybody, and may I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved. We have a motion. Do we have support? We have motion, support to close at 8:07. Mr. Whitsett, if you please, call the roll.
Mary Rafer?
Yes.
Wanda Moody?
Yes.
Kim Lee Naylor? Gary Sussex?
Yes.
Alexander Stokes?
Yes.
John DeHoyt?
Yes.